I call this regular meeting of the Chester County Board of School Trustees on this twenty-seventh day of October two thousand twenty-five to order. Do I have a motion for the approval of the agenda?
I make a motion to approve the agenda.
Do I have a second? All those in favor of approving the agenda as provided, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries unanimously. Alright, next, do I have a motion to move into executive session?
Chairman, I move that we go to executive session at this time.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor of moving into executive session for the purposes of discussing certified personnel recommendations to receive legal advice regarding a tax increment financing proposal from the city of Chester and to discuss potential contract regarding additional provider of legal services, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries unanimously. We are now in executive session.
Motion to return from executive session and move back into open session.
All those in favor of returning from executive session and moving back into open session,
please signify by saying aye. Any opposed? That motion carries unanimously. All right, we are back into public session. All right, next if we will have Mr. Doug Shannon for invocation.
I would say prayer now. I would say, "Glorious Father, we praise your name. We thank you for the rain that you had sent to us and we lived up in prayer all..." We thank you for the rain that you had sent to us and we lift up in prayer all those that are in the path of the hurting. Guide us as we seek to make good decisions that are pleasing to you in all that we say and do. We pray that you lift concerns and direct us to focus on the needs of students in the Chester County School District. We pray for the help in activities of all of the school district staff and administration. We ask these things in Christ's name.
All right, next of you, please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, next we're going to move into our special recognitions.
All right, good evening, everyone. Thank you for being here tonight. We are going to start with our special recognitions. First up, we have Mr. Tamari Rice. On Friday, September twenty-sixth, Mr. Tamari Rice, can you see him? All right, stand up for us. Let's give him a big round of applause. On Friday, September twenty-sixth, student Tamari Rice was honored at the South Carolina State Museum, where his artwork was featured as a part of When I See Myself, an opening reception. The exhibition included a ribbon cutting, remarks from community leaders, and the unveiling of a powerful student artwork, including his piece, now a part of the gallery display. Congratulations, Mr. Tamari Rice. And if you can see that picture between him and his family, that's his actual artwork. That's their amazing artwork. Congratulations. We'd like to also take this opportunity to recognize Mr. Pete Stone. If you would come forward, Mr. Stone. Congratulations to our very own Mr. Pete Stone for being one of five public school educators from across the country who will be recognized with one of the highest honors in public education, the Hardest Man Award for Teaching Excellence. The awardees were selected by an expert panel and evaluated based on excellence in the classroom, dedication to increasing opportunities for all students, engagement with families and communities, commitment to professional development, and the advocacy for the teaching profession. Congratulations to our very own Mr. Pete Stone. And Mr. Rice, if you will go up and take a picture with Ms. Snipes as well. Congratulations to our Rock Star Teacher of the Month for the month of September twenty-twenty-five, Mr. Cano from Lewisville Middle School, seventh grade science teacher. It is my honor to nominate Mr. Cano, seventh grade science teacher at Lewisville Middle School, for the Rock Star Teacher of the Month. He is an outstanding teacher who goes above and beyond to teach his students. His students are consistently engaged in hands-on lessons daily, and he has built great working relationships with his students. Our halls and his classroom are filled with student projects showcasing the awesome science lessons that they are learning in Mr. Cano's class. Not only is he valued by his students, but he has great professional relationships in our building and throughout the district with his colleagues. He often attends sporting and band events to support his students, and he is always in attendance for school and district level professional development. As Mr. Cano's principal, I admire his work ethics, his teamwork and his teamwork mentality. He is a huge asset not only to our school, but to our district as well. I truly enjoy working with him and consider ourselves to be lucky to have such an awesome educator. However, don't take my word for it. Here's what Mr. Cano's students had to say about him. "I like how we always do projects. His class is never boring, and he always helps us." Another student said, "He's a cool teacher, and he never gets mad. He always keeps his cool." A third student made the comment, "His class is hands-on and well-decorated with our work, and I enjoy being in his class." What an awesome testament from the students about their teacher. Mr. Cano could teach anywhere in the world, yet he chooses to come and teach. He chose to come and teach in Chester County School District. Our students' knowledge in science has grown tremendously since his arrival at Lewisville Middle School, and he is taking our students from great to world-class achievers, and he is our Rock Star Teacher every day. Congratulations, Lewisville Middle School and Mr. Cano. Our Support Staff Person of the Month is Ms. Margaret Morgan, and she is here with us tonight from Chester Park, CO. Let's give her a big round of applause. You want to stand? Being shy tonight? All right, we're going to grab a picture of you. You were nominated by Ms. Tanya Ashford-Knox. And I must say that the last, the Teacher of the Month was nominated by Principal Mr. Edmund as well. You were nominated by Ms. Tanya Ashford-Knox. I've nominated Ms. Margaret Morgan, our new receptionist, at Chester Park Co. Elementary School because she has been an incredible addition to our Co. family this school year. From the very first day, Ms. Morgan has made a lasting impression with her pleasant smile. We saw that tonight. Warm demeanor and genuine care for everyone who enters our building. She truly sets the tone for our school's welcoming environment. Ms. Morgan goes above and beyond in all that she does. She often arrives early and stays late to ensure that the front office runs smoothly and that staff, students, and families are supported. Her dependability and consistency make her a trusted and valued member of our team. For example, when she is asked to complete a task, she not only meets our expectations, but often has it ready ahead of time with great attention to detail and one-hundred percent effort. Staff members frequently comment that Ms. Morgan is a breath of fresh air and that her positive attitude makes their day brighter. Parents have shared that she makes them feel welcome and cared for from the moment they walk into the store. Students enjoy greeting her each morning because she always takes time to speak to them with kindness and encouragement. Ms. Morgan's professionalism, reliability, and caring nature makes her truly special and an essential part of our school community. Congratulations, Ms. Margaret Morgan, our Support Staff Person of the Month. We'd like to recognize our September Support Staff Attendance Award. This month, it goes to Lewisville Elementary School. And I don't know where the trophy is. Somebody has it. They haven't returned it, so we'll find it, and we'll make sure we get it to you. I don't know who's trying to hold on to it. Let's give Lewisville Elementary School another big round of applause. At this time, we'd like to recognize two of our board members. Board member and leadership team training is a priority for the South Carolina School Boards Association. Established in nineteen-eighty-two, the South Carolina School Board Association's Boardmanship Institute offers a year-round training curriculum focused on leadership skills for board members on state and national educational issues. We are always pleased to honor these individuals who reach one of the six levels in the South Carolina School Board Association's Boardmanship Institute. Congratulations are in order to our board members, starting with Ms. Kenneth Funderbur. Ms. Funderbur received Level Two. Let's give her one more big round of applause. All right. And Mr. Robert Roddy, Level One. Congratulations. All right, congratulations again to Mr. Roddy and Ms. Funderbur.
Thank you, Mr. Sumter. All right, we do not have any public comments for tonight, but I'm going to take a brief pause. If anyone would like to exit, if you don't want to hang around for the rest of the meeting, y'all are welcome to do that. All right, before we move into our staff reports, we're going to move into executive session action items. Do I have an action item to, do I have a motion to approve the certified personnel recommendations as provided in executive session?
Madam Chairman, I'll make a motion that we approve the certified personnel recommendations that we received in the executive session.
Is there a second? All those in favor of approving the certified personnel recommendations as presented in executive session, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries unanimously. All right, next, do we have a motion regarding the City of Chester tax increment financing proposal?
Yes, we do. Madam Chairman, after receiving a legal briefing on the City of Chester's proposed King Landing TIF district, I move that the school district object to the King's Landing TIF district plan and reject participation in the King's Landing TIF district. The superintendent of the school district shall officially notify the City of Chester that participation in the proposed King's Landing TIF district has been rejected by the school district. The school district does, however, reserve the right to discuss limited participation in the King's Landing TIF district at some point in the future. Notice of the school district's objection to the King's Landing TIF district plan and rejection of participation in the King's Landing TIF district shall be provided to the city on or before November twenty-fourth, twenty-twenty-five.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All right, all those in favor of moving forward with the objection to the King's Landing TIF district as presented by the City of Chester, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries unanimously. All right, next, are there any other action items resulting from executive session?
After hearing information regarding potential contracts and additional provider of legal services for the school board, I'd like to make a motion to appoint Morton Engetti's attorney at law as an additional provider of legal services for the Chester County School District and the Chester County Board of Education.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All right, all those in favor of approving a motion to appoint Morton Engetti's attorneys at law as an additional provider of legal services for the Chester County School District and the Chester County Board of School Trustees, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries unanimously. All right, with that, we move into our consent agenda. Do I have a motion for the approval of the consent agenda, which included minutes of the previous meetings, as well as the overnight field trip request?
I make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, all those in favor of approving the consent agenda is presented, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion also carries unanimously. All right, with that, that brings us to our staff reports. I believe Mr. Barr is out today, but I believe Mr. Hosenback is going to give us some operational updates, specifically maintenance updates.
Good afternoon, all. People from the community and superintendent. I would like to give a report on our maintenance program. As it stands now, our current staffing consists of a director, two locksmiths slash general maintenance guys, two licensed plumbers, two HVAC technicians, and two general maintenance guys, and a bookkeeper, which is not a lot for the facilities we have in place now. I mean, fifteen buildings. Our work order system currently works as stated. Work orders can be requested by principals, teachers, or Bud Group employees. Now, once they are put in, they have to be approved by the administrator of that particular building. Issues are identified by our maintenance staff and myself. I currently do bi-weekly walkthroughs of each location. It normally takes me a week, at least a week, to get around. Sometimes I get hung up in buildings on other situations and other causes during the day. All right, our work orders for August and September, out of one-hundred-and-eighty-two work orders entered, we completed one-hundred-and-sixty-one. Work orders that are not completed as quickly as possible as they should be despite of potential delays due to parts being ordered or due to contracted services. Our preventative maintenance program, quarterly preventative maintenance, is currently scheduled on all HVAC units. Monthly inspections are conducted on lift stations and restrooms. Site inspections are conducted on a routine basis. Our future goal is to include a general maintenance worker at each school and one to serve non-school sites. This would increase department effectiveness. And this concludes my presentation.
Any questions from the board?
Yes, ma'am.
So, when you do your walk-around, do you make a list of things that need to be done and then get those out?
Yes, ma'am. I'll bring them back, and my bookkeeper puts in work orders.
I do have a question. I noticed that at Great Falls, over the section of the older building that's not being re-rooted, some of the air conditioning units were being removed. Is that to secure that roof area?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. So, that's not going to be re-rooted, but it's just going to be secured so it doesn't leak so bad?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
Oh, one more.
Yes, ma'am.
So, I saw somebody posted on Facebook today that there was a trash can in Chester High School.
Yes, ma'am.
I guess, I know we're supposed to be doing a roof repair. Is that part of the roof that's supposed to be getting repaired, or is this new?
The entire roof is supposed to be repaired. Yeah, we had evidence in REI, which is a contractor, and they come looked at it. They are supposed to be getting back with us on a price. They are in the process of doing core samples on that roof. But when we were up there, they said this thing is unreparable. It has to be replaced.
Any other questions? All right, thank you, Mr. Hosenback.
All right, thank y'all.
All right, next, our financial report. Ms. Terry Smith. All right, next, our financial report, Ms. Terry Smith.
Good evening. In your board packet, you have a copy of the General Fund Financial Overview for September. Total revenues received to date is approximately nine million dollars, which represents twelve percent of the total budgeted revenues. We will begin receiving our Tier Three State Property Tax reimbursement in October. The Tier Three revenue is the one-cent sales tax increase implemented by the passing of Act 388 in 2006. Act 388 removes school operating taxes on owner-occupied homes and replace that revenue with the one-cent sales tax increase. Expenditures at the end of September totaled fourteen point six million dollars and represents twenty percent of total budgeted expenditures. So, at the end of... Or at the July Board Retreat, I provided a list of priorities that I would be focusing on this school year. One of those priorities was to update all fiscal management board policies. Those are the D-Policies. So, as you are aware, the majority of the D-Policies date back to 2001. In addition, there have been several new policies that we have not adopted. So, I have contracted with the South Carolina School Boards Association, who will provide us with the model policies. My goal is to have all D-Policies reviewed and presented to the board in two readings prior to July 1st. There is a total of twenty-eight model policies for fiscal management. So, I do plan on presenting the policies to the board in batches. The total cost is six hundred dollars to contract with the School Board Association. They have a ten-model policy limit for each section per year. So, anything in excess of ten policies requires a policy revision contract.
Can I ask you a quick question on that before you move on?
Yes, ma'am.
So, when you present these policies to us, like you said, it's twenty-eight policies. So, I understand that some of our policies are going to be based on what are legal requirements versus some of those policies do have some board... Some board discretion. So, when you present those to us, will you have those marked up to where we can see what is required by law versus what is board discretion?
Yes, I will, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
So, what I usually will provide is here's our current version of the policy. Here's the model policy, and then here's the proposed. So, I wanted to provide some information on the Fraud Risk Management Program. Finance will re-implement this program here in the upcoming weeks. As we all know, everything begins with the tone at the top. We must clearly communicate the behavior, what behavior is acceptable, and what expectations are of our employees. Our focus is maintaining a culture of honesty and high ethical standards. The key objectives of this program are to prevent, detect, and respond to fraud or fiscal misconduct. Finance will assess potential areas of risk, develop and implement appropriate internal controls, monitor and modify those controls as deemed necessary. This not only applies to our internal controls that we have, but it also applies to our documented procedures. We have a document on this Fraud Risk Management Program that will be given to all employees. There is a form at the end of this document that employees would sign acknowledging that they have read it and that they understand the requirements and the expectations of the district. Included in the document is the Organizational Code of Conduct, which includes the district's expectations on just employee conduct, conflicts of interest, the relationships that we hold with customers and our suppliers. It will address kickbacks and secret commissions, how we conduct ourselves with outside activities, employment, and related interests, access to district funds, and personal use of district assets, organizational records and communications, how to deal with outside people and organizations, the importance of prompt communications, and privacy and confidentiality. The goal for this is to be implemented by the end of November and sent out to all employees.
Is there a date when this is going to go out today?
Prior to the end of November, hopefully in the next week or two. So, tonight, there is an action item later in the agenda for the fiscal year 2025-2026 Loyalty Bonus. As you are aware, every year, the district is required to have a financial audit that is conducted by a state-approved CPA firm. We are in the final stages of our audit, and the results will be presented at the November Board Meeting. The fund balance for our General Fund increased approximately one million dollars as of the end of June 30th, 2025. Currently, our ending fund balance as of June 30th is approximately thirty-three percent of our fiscal year 2025-2026 budgeted General Fund expenditures. For the past few years, the board has approved a loyalty bonus for all district employees. It is administration's recommendation to provide a loyalty bonus in December to our employees, similar to what the district has done in previous years. Full-time employees would receive a thousand dollars. Part-time employees would see five hundred. The estimated total cost is seven hundred and fifty-two thousand dollars. We would assign fund balance to cover this cost. If this is approved, our June 30th ending fund balance as compared to fiscal year 2025-2026 budgeted General Fund expenditures would be approximately thirty-two percent. Tonight, administration will be requesting board approval to provide a loyalty bonus to our employees, which would be paid in December. Thousand dollars for full-time employees, five hundred for part-time employees. Another item that will be on the action item for tonight is the Proposed Fiscal Year 2025-2026 General Fund Budget Amendment. And this would be amendment number one. So, in your packet, you have the proposed amendment. So, if the board approves the employee loyalty bonus tonight, the interim superintendent and CFO are proposing a budget amendment to reflect the cost of the loyalty bonus. The increase to the salary budget is six hundred ninety-two thousand five hundred, which is a one-point-eight percent increase to the total salary budget. The increase to the benefits budget is fifty-nine thousand seventy, which is a zero-point-three percent increase to our total benefits budget. The benefit costs that are associated with bonuses is social security, FICA, and workers' compensation. Bonuses are not subject to retirement. The percentage increase to our total budgeted expenditures is one percent. The district would allocate a portion of our fund balance to cover the cost of the loyalty bonus. So, if the bonus is approved tonight, administration is requesting approval of the proposed fiscal year 2025-2026 General Fund Budget Amendment Number One. The amended total revenues and use of fund balance would be seventy-three million two hundred and fourteen thousand six hundred and forty-six. The amended total expenditures would be the same amount, seventy-three million two hundred and fourteen thousand six hundred and forty-six. The amendment would represent a one-percent increase to our General Fund Budget. Tonight, administration will be requesting approval of the fiscal year 25-26 General Fund Budget Amendment Number One. This concludes the finance report, and I'll be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
So, I have a question, and I'm not sure that I understand why we have done what we've done in the past. So, typically, the loyalty bonuses are presented to the board at the same time as the audit report. And in the past, there's been some indication that somehow the loyalty bonuses change or are reflected in our audit report. Can you just explain to me how that impacts our audit report that is... That would be fiscal year ending 2025, that we will be receiving in November?
Because we would be assigning, or the request is to assign seven hundred and fifty-two thousand of fund balance at June 30th, 2025, we would assign that in the financial audits. So, that is a portion that is designated specifically to cover the cost of the bonuses. So, it is an audit, financial reporting mechanism that we are required to do. So, anytime we set money aside specifically for a specific purpose in the financial audit, we designate on our fund balance, this is what is committed, this is what's used for capital improvements, this is what is assigned for board-approved items. So, it is strictly a reporting on the financial reports for June 30th, 2025, but the actual bonuses do not get paid to the employees until December of 2025.
When we budget for that, is that in covered or...
Liability.
So, on this, the budget amendment? It is in there as an expense. So, I am increasing the expenditures for salaries and benefits to cover that cost.
Okay, when we do the budget for this coming year?
Yes, ma'am.
Can we include the bonuses in it and not have to do this again?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Absolutely. In the current year, the teacher... Teacher recruitment bonus is budgeted in the 25-26 budget. This one, however, was not.
All right, any other questions for Ms. Smith? All right, with that, we'll move on to Curriculum and Instruction. Dr. Khalid.
All right, good evening, Madam Chair and board members and those who are here to join us either in person or virtually. So, we have our Profile of the South Carolina Graduate, and we were having actually some conversation about this today because this is our... Definitely our North Star. It is our why behind what we do. And I guess I take for granted too sometimes in terms of folks understanding what went into creating this. So, it actually is the effort of those names of those groups that are listed there below, and those of whom you have been around for a little bit, you may remember Transform SC, which came about in 2013. And it was a part of the SC Council on Competitiveness, which is actually twenty years old. A Voice for Businesses is basically what it is. But the premise behind the Profile of the South Carolina Graduate was really to take our kids from the classroom to careers. And these were the attributes, the things that we wanted to have, make sure business is said and indicated in all those groups that we needed to have for our kids. So, definitely, this is our goal. We want to have test scores as an indicator of the fact that our kids are on track for this. But we want our kids to meet that profile of the South Carolina graduates. So, all of our efforts are in service to that. And as a department, we do take very seriously making sure that we are working towards increasing student achievement in our relationships with our schools. That's our work. And we... And our goal is for that to also result in our students being able to meet those outcomes and those expectations that have been set for us in our standards and through our South Carolina Department of Education. You may have heard that the school report card release has been postponed. The South Carolina Department of Education had data validation, and we are thankful and grateful for that because they were being responsive to the needs and input from districts. So, where the report cards were originally scheduled to be released on October 13th, they will be released on November 3rd. So, schools now have an opportunity to go and look at that information that's available to them, that's currently embargoed, and we'll share those results during our meeting on November 18th. So, that's just a screenshot of that. The South Carolina... The link, it's an external link that is available in multiple languages, but you'll be able to go and view that information. Currently, it's scheduled for November 3rd. Just wanted to provide an update regarding our Fall Intercession. And again, for those who may not be aware, we do, during the week that we have off in the fall, as well as in February, we offer academic support for our students. We ran during the hours of eight to twelve for our elementary students, nine to one for our secondary students. And we wanted to make sure we were able to provide transportation. Breakfast and lunch were also served. And our next intercession will be in February. But for the Fall Intercession, we have criteria at the elementary level and the secondary level for those students who were invited to attend. Of course, it's not required, but we did try to be as persuasive. The school leaders were as persuasive as they could be to get the students to come. But we did look focused on reading because we do have our students who identified or being identified who may potentially have to attend our summer reading camp. So, that was the focus. And then for our secondary, that criteria was students who were performing but low-grade level, failing one or more classes. And we also use that time as an opportunity to have students do some makeup time for hours if they were already in danger of the failure due to absences. And so, we had four hundred and fifty-nine students who were invited for elementary school, secondary, four hundred and ninety-four students. And you can see the total number of students who were present on the each-day seventh, eighth, and ninth of October for each level. And we ended with a total of three hundred and seventy-five students at the elementary and the secondary level who participated. And that is an increase of one hundred and seventy students when comparing to spring 2025. And we'll share additional information when we have that February intercession as well.
Do the students have to be invited to come? Or say a parent thinks the child needs extra help, can they come or do they have to be invited?
I would say that the schools kind of handle that on a case-by-case basis. But they do give priority to the students who have been... That they've used the criteria to identify those students. Because one of the things that we have to do too is make sure when we have that, we also want to make sure that we have the staffing. And the goal is not to have a roomful, but to really be able to provide more intensive support for students. So, smaller group setting is the goal during that time as well. But we have had, you know, some situations where the schools would handle that on a... I would say on a case-by-case. But we have had, you know, some situations where the schools would handle that on a, I would say, on a case-by-case. And just in terms of standards that are currently up for approval, we had our young man who was here and was highlighted at the museum. And so all of our areas, and again, going back to that profile of the South Carolina graduate, when we look at that world-class knowledge, we have many students who are gifted in lots of areas in visual performing arts. Standards are going before the board for second and final reading approval in November. And then just as our general reminders, report cards were distributed last week. And so we always encourage our families to reach out to the schools with any questions and concerns, review that with their children, and make sure they are setting those goals. We do have early release that will be on November eleventh, as well as progress reports. It's hard to believe those will come out on November twelfth. And we always highlight the importance of that homeschool communication, but particularly that attendance. And I know Mr. Massey's department works intently on that too, because we need students in the classrooms for them to be able to learn. But we remind our high school students that they do, if you, if you exceed the number of absences, that it does cost in order to make up some of that time. And that concludes my report for this morning, this evening.
Any questions?
Yes, I'm sorry.
I said, any questions?
Oh, okay.
I was asking the board any questions. All right. Thank you, Dr. Khalid. All right. Next, we have our human resources report. Mr. Wendell Sumner.
So tonight, I'm pleased, again, good evening to you again. I'm pleased to share with you our two thousand twenty-five SARA report. We did submit our report to SARA. So tonight, I'd just like to highlight some of the information that we learned as a result of our pulling together this information that the Chester County School District demonstrated continued strength in staffing stability between two thousand twenty-four and two thousand twenty-five. Overall, as I present tonight, you'll see that we improved retention slightly. We, our turnover decreased, and our vacancy rates remained among the lowest across peer district in the state of South Carolina. Staffing and workforce. So we increased some of our staffing, in-person staffing. So in two thousand three, twenty-four, you may recall that we did have a lot of virtual teachers and all of those things as a result of that. And so in two thousand twenty-four, you will see that we were able to add in-person staff to our staff, reflecting the growth in instructional capacity. New hires, the district hired slightly more new certified staff in two thousand twenty-five. And that is the result of those persons that we had to hire in place of those virtual teachers that we had. And so it appears that we hired more new certified staff, maintaining an effective hiring pipeline and steady recruitment rate. We had fewer departures in two thousand twenty-four, uh, two thousand twenty-five compared to two thousand twenty-three, two thousand twenty-four. So now we have our intention, retention rate. We improved our retention rate to ninety-three point three percent in two thousand twenty-five, up approximately from ninety-two percent in two thousand twenty-four. Our turnover rate declined. We had a turnover rate of six point seven from roughly eight percent in two thousand twenty-four. This indicates stronger teacher satisfaction and improved retention initiatives across the district. So again, grateful to the board for, you know, the bonuses that you approve for us, the loyalty bonus. Also, the teacher bonus that we have, that they receive in the spring. I think all of those initiatives have helped us significantly in retaining our staff. We often talk about the fact that retention is the new recruitment. So making sure that we retain our staff is so important. The vacancy rate, again, declined slightly to point six percent in two thousand twenty-five, maintaining one of the lowest vacancy burdens regionally. Our new hire rate was stable at approximately six to seven percent year over year with the balanced recruitment across all grade levels. Pre-K through fifth grade positions remain the most stable. So pre-K through fifth grade positions remain the most stable, while middle and secondary levels saw a minor fluctuation in vacancies and new hires. So to give you kind of an idea of that, for example, the last year, two thousand three, twenty-four, we had approximately eighty new hires. This year, we have approximately sixty new hires. So that lets you know that there was a significant difference in the number of hires that we had from the previous year, which is a good sign for us. Principals and staff are doing a really good job of maintaining the staff that they have and, and creating the kind of cultures where people will want to stay. And you'll see some information in just a minute that I will share about our exit survey and what many people had to say. So departures by experience, so the largest scale of departures for us in two thousand twenty-four, two thousand twenty-five was that among educators who had ten-plus years of experience, followed by those with the two-point, two to five-year range. However, it is important to note tonight that our early departures, those teachers who are, our induction and annual teachers declined slightly, improving, indicating an improved induction and mentoring outcomes. I have to give a shout out to Ms. Lisa Brett, who is our Director of Educated Quality, who does an amazing, I told her earlier today, I'm going to shout you out, because she does an amazing job with our induction teachers, whether they are our international induction teachers or those teachers from here. She does an amazing job, and I'm thankful for her because I do believe that a lot of credit should go to her for what she does with our induction program. So the year-to-year change, two thousand twenty-five versus two thousand twenty-four. Of course, you see in two thousand twenty-four, the retention rate was ninety-two percent. Currently, it's ninety-three point three percent. The turnover rate was eight percent in two thousand twenty-five, six point seven. Vacancy rate was point eight percent. Currently, it's point six. Our new hire rate was six point nine in two thousand twenty-four, and our new hire rate for two thousand twenty-five was six point seven. When we talk about the exit survey, the primary reasons that people listed that they leave the district or left the district was retirement and relocation. Those remain pretty high, retirement and relocation. A smaller but notable share of the exit surveys from our district reference compensation concerns and workload stress aligning with state and national patterns. Very few, which I was extremely proud of, very few persons who completed our exit survey indicated that they left because of school climate or leadership issues. And that is, again, attributed to positive school cultures at each of our individual schools and the support that they're receiving. So we're very excited to see that trend happening. Ms. Fundabert, you asked, I believe, last time I did the SARA report, SARA no longer requires a lot of the information that I'm about to share with you all, but I wanted to make sure that we looked at exactly the number of people that left and why did they leave? So hopefully, I know it looks kind of small on your, on your sheet. But you'll see that, you know, we had one person who said they left because of dissatisfaction with benefits, one that said they were dissatisfied with their salary, two that said that they were dissatisfied with their principal, you know, early retirement, lack of advancement opportunities, lack of flexible hours with three people, lack of training and professional development with only one. But you'll see that the majority of them that left indicated relocation, or it was relationship-driven. So I don't know, maybe they're coming here and they're getting married and then leaving us because they found love somewhere. I don't know. I'm just saying. But it was relationship-oriented, oriented, or sometimes they leave because their, you know, spouses got a job in another city or something like that. But that was the, the highest number. Opportunity to learn new skills to people and then stay at home. Some people left saying they just wanted to stay at home and probably take care of their families. And then thirteen were other reasons. And, you know, sometimes they don't really tell us exactly other than they, they want to change or something like that. But that gives us a great idea of what we're seeing happening. Yes, ma'am, Ms. Ford.
So, Mass, go ahead. Go ahead, Ms. Ford.
I was just wanting to say, I don't see anywhere up there where you have dissatisfaction with student behavior. I see where you have safety, and that's not explained. So are you going to add dissatisfaction with student behavior?
Well, if you remember when I gave the report from the South Carolina Teacher Exit Survey, that survey reflected information about discipline and student behavior. So that's, and they participated in that one as well. I can add that in the future to, if you want specifically, whether it was related to discipline, I can add that back in there. But safety is, you know, something that's related to, you know, discipline or issues at their schools or something like that. But in the SC Teacher Exit Survey, they do talk about student discipline being a factor.
So in fall of two thousand twenty-three, you provided us with the SARA exit data. And the top three reasons for teachers leaving was classroom autonomy, school leadership, and discipline. So since then, and I know I asked you maybe a couple of board meetings ago, our internal exit survey does not have student discipline any longer.
It doesn't have student discipline.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am. And I can add that in if you guys would like me to add that in. That's not a problem, but I can add that in if, if you'd like to.
Well, if that was one of the top three reasons that was reported, by not having that as an option, it, it appears that that's no longer a concern, when in reality, it could be a concern. It has just been removed from the survey.
Yes, yes, yes. And again, because it is reflected in the South Carolina Teacher Exit Survey and the information I shared with you all regards to that, we didn't include it in this one, but I can, we can put it back in there. That's not.
Then I have one other question.
Sure.
So when we talk about retention rates, so retention rates improved to ninety-three point three percent in two thousand twenty-five from an approximately ninety-two percent in two thousand twenty-four. Can you just talk to me about what goes into this calculation of retention rate as comparison to our state report card retention rate? Because when I look at our state report card retention rate, so for example, our two thousand twenty-four state report card, percent of teachers returning from previous year is eighty-one point three percent. So that's, that's kind of a, a large discrepancy there between what we're being presented as our retention rate versus what is being shown in our state report cards. So if you don't have the answer right now, that's fine.
Yeah, I probably need to research that a little bit.
But I'm kind of interested in knowing what the discrepancy is, what are we including that they are not including? Because, of course, the state report cards, that is what is going to be published. And I look back several years, and I, I really couldn't align the data that the board had been given to our state report cards for several years. So there must be something in, different in the calculation.
So let me research that, but I do think that what happens with our, like, for example, with the SC Teacher Survey, they only survey classroom teachers. So when they pull the information, or they, we send them the information to send out the email, they only pull student, I mean, teacher information. So I'll review that, because I remember that coming up before as well, to see what the difference is between what we collect for SARA and what we report and what is collected for the school report card and see what that difference is.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. I'll do that.
And also, this exit survey does give us insight that things are not as bad as sometimes it's being portrayed.
Right. I, you know, I think it is, it's good news for us.
It is.
I think to, and, and keep in mind that when it comes to the exit survey, people are not required to complete it. So it's not necessarily everybody when we talk about the exit survey. But the SARA numbers, the numbers that we report to SARA are based on classroom teachers only. They do have a section for like school librarians and media specialists and those kind of people. So they do have a separate section for that, but that's what we provide for them. But the exit survey information I'm providing you is just our exit survey, not the one that the SC teacher did. But again, I think it is a good indication. I think the things that the board has supported, such as the twenty-five hundred dollars, a thousand dollar bonus, and the support that we give to our induction teachers, I think all of that is working for us, for our good. And then also, I think the principals at their, you know, people's, they often say, people don't leave buildings, they leave leadership. And I think the principals at those buildings are the ones who are the real key holders to retaining their staff. And again, I think they've been doing a really good job of working with those staff members that they have. And again, the majority of departing educators indicated they were planning to remain in education, and some have reported leaving the profession entirely, like you saw one that said they were just going to be at home. Over eighty of the respondents of our Chester County School District exit survey said that they were satisfied or very satisfied with their teaching experience here in Chester. Respondents highlighted strong administrative support and collegial culture as positive retention factors. This was mirrored in our SC Teacher Exit Surveys as well, that one of the biggest factors is the relationships that they have with their colleagues. And so again, I, I do think that that relationship with their colleagues is one that's really important. When we ask, like, what allows you to stay in Chester, most of the time, people will simply say that the feeling of family. So I think, again, those cultures that we have in our schools are really what's holding us together. Opportunities for career advancement and compensation adjustments were identified as key areas of improvement. I think we will always probably have some of those compensation adjustments as a, a reason. So how satisfied, this is actually from the actual survey itself, how satisfied with, were you with the morale of employees at your work location? And that's at each individual school. And you will see right there that that gives us an indication of extremely satisfied, very satisfied. There was no one that said that they were not satisfied at all. And so that's, that's really good. I think that, that says a lot about what's happening in our individual buildings. So some key takeaways, the Chester County School District continues to outperform averages for retention and staffing stability, sustain reductions in turnover and vacancy signal that we have some effective retention and recruitment practices. Continued focus on experienced educator support may reduce late-career attrition. Now, I don't know if that's going to help, because, you know, those who have that ten-plus years' experience could be at retirement. They're ready to go. But we, we try to encourage our retirees to actually come back with us as well. The district's proactive staffing and mentorship systems are managing a stable workforce amid statewide shortages. So we are really pleased, and we hope that we will continue to see this trend in maintaining and keeping our staff here in Chester County School District. And thanks again to you, the board, for your support of our educators as well.
Thank you, Mr. Sumner.
You're welcome.
All right. Next, with our administrative services report, Mr. Hezekiah Massey.
All right. Good evening to all. Want to start by sharing a array of positivity from a program that we were able to participate in this past Friday. It's really been planned out for about a month now, but Fort Lawn Community Center supports the food pantries here in Chester at Inver Church. They support GRASS, and of course, the food pantry at the Fort Lawn Community Center. And on Friday, the ROTC students from Great Falls High School partnered with other volunteers from the district office and from the community to bag up three hundred and thirty bags plus of apples, pears, sweet potatoes, and individually wrapped potatoes, and provided these sample bags along with information in the bags on how to access the food resources available through the Fort Lawn Community Center. Just last week alone, over one hundred and fifteen families picked up food in Great Falls area through GRASS. Of course, Fort Lawn Community Center's pantry supports that food pantry as well. And as you're aware, of course, the SNAP benefits are planned to run out starting, I believe, November the first. So this intensifies the need in our community. Of course, this county already had a vast food need. And of course, the students in each of our different localities are affected by that as well. So this was a very great step in the right direction of helping the community meet the needs and having our students get some great volunteer service hours as well. We also have partnered with the Fort Lawn Community Center. As mentioned, those, that community center's pantry supports the different pantries around the county. And we have a, a contest within our high schools. Each of our high school campuses have been challenged to donate canned goods for this. Each of our high school campuses, uh, have been challenged to donate canned goods, um, for, uh, this week and last week. Uh, it, it ends on Friday. We may extend it if we can get in some additional donations. But, um, all of the canned goods, of course, leading into November, uh, of, of, in the month of giving, uh, will be donated, um, to the local food pantries. But the class, uh, that has the highest number of donated cans in each of those schools will receive a pizza party that we will pay for, um, you know, for their participation. And so again, we're trying to again, meet the needs of the community, uh, by supporting the food resource needs of those in our county. Lastly, I want to touch on, uh, the Red Ribbon Week Activities. That's a tongue twister. Uh, but, uh, the Red Ribbon Week Activities started October the twenty-third and run through next week. Um, our youth advisory council, which, uh, is, uh, constitutes, uh, seventy different students across each of our high schools. They meet monthly. They met this past Friday at Great Falls High School. And then those are some of the activities that they participated in. Uh, of course, the, uh, Red Ribbon Week, uh, is a national campaign started back in nineteen eighty-five uh, that, um, is a campaign against alcohol, drugs and violence. In addition to this activity, we have, uh, obtained a, um, partnership with Hazel Pittman and Smoke Free S C to offer Tier One, uh, vape intervention, a vape intervention program to all of our middle school students. And then Tier Two and Tier Three support for the offenders at the high school level. Uh, we'll be instituting that hopefully, um, by December. We'll have a test run in December, but by January we'll have that in place in our schools. Of course, uh, vaping falls under, uh, those things that, uh, would be, uh, attributed and campaigned against by the, uh, by our, um, Red Ribbon Week and our youth council as well. And then lastly, on tomorrow, uh, we're partnering with the Children's Law Center to host a parent, another of our series in Empowering Parents as Partners, um, series. Uh, but the, a, an attorney from the Children's Law Center will discuss with our parents, uh, the dangers of firearms and firearms safety, uh, in youth. Uh, this, of course, event is a, a tri-county event. The, uh, Grant Safeguarding Our Youth is a tri-county, um, grant that, uh, we're participating in along with Fairfield and Lancaster. Uh, but this, uh, Zoom tomorrow night at six P M., uh, will be distributed by Mr. Christoph. He'll distribute the flyer, um, to our parents, but parents can learn, uh, just more about how to keep their homes safe, how to, um, um, be active participants in, uh, decreasing the number of, 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 uh, incidents with youth and firearms. And of course, we welcome any information from the experts at the Children's Law Center in this area. And this concludes my portion of the report.
Thank you, Mr. Massey. All right, next we have our superintendent's report, um, in our, Tammy Snipes.
Good evening, Madam Chairman, members of the board. What an honor it is to sit here in this seat and get to do this. Um, the first thing I have is I just want to, um, remember the family and friends and school of Michael Scott Griffin who lost his life on October the eighth. He was a fifteen-year-old, um, Great Falls High School student. He was on their baseball team. He participated in his junior ROTC program. He ran cross-country. Um, he was described with quiet strength and genuine care. And so I just ask that we continue to remember his family, his school, his friends in his loss. Um, some highlights from our Lewisville High School band. They went on October the eighteenth and competed in the Old English, um, Festival of Bands at Memorial Stadium in Rock Hill. Um, they performed in Class Two A. As we know, most One A bands, um, when you go to competition, um, then there's not a lot of One A bands competing, so they of course have to, to class up. So, um, performed in Class Two A. They won an excellent rating. They were third place in visual performance and third place in overall effect. Um, they also conclude their competition season on Saturday, November first, first at North Central High School, where they will be, um, competing in the state marching championships. Um, some athletic highlights, um, I have been around the county visiting, um, Chester High School, Lewisville High School, Great Falls High School. So Chester High School volleyball team, um, competed in round one of the playoffs and have completed their season. But what an honor to get to go to playoffs. Everybody doesn't get to, um, compete at playoffs. So it is an honor that they got to do that. Um, the Chester High School tennis team made the playoffs and were awarded a one thousand dollar grant from the Universal Tennis Foundation Scholars and Scores Count High School Grant Program. And having been a high school principal, I will tell you a thousand dollars for a tennis program is big. Um, student Terry Radford was selected to play in the annual North Carolina-South Carolina Shrine Bowl for the South Carolina team. So what an honor that he was chosen. For our Lewisville High School, our volleyball team at Lewisville High School, um, currently is playing in the second round, um, tonight. They defeated Thornwell last night. Um, they were currently undefeated and were the Region Two Class A Region Champions. So as you leave here tonight, you might have time to stop at Lewisville High School and cheer them on to their next victory. Um, the Lewisville High School Boys Cross Country Team won the Chester County Championship on October fourteenth, twenty twenty-five. They will run for the Region Two Class Cross Country Region Championship later this week. Um, the varsity football plays for the Region Two Class A Football Region Championship Friday night at Lamar High School. And the competitive cheer squad placed first in the Class Two A Division on the fifteenth in Columbia. So Lewisville High School's also been busy. Um, at Great Falls High School, their volleyball team also, um, competed in the first round of playoffs and have ended their season. But their program is rather new and for them to make it to the playoffs is something we should all be very proud of. Um, Great Falls High School Athletic Department has, has been awarded a grant by Dabo Sweeney's All-in Team Foundation. The grant is valued a little, little over five thousand dollars and will go toward new cardio equipment for middle school student athletes. They also, um, had completed a T-Mobile Five K Drop Grant that was five thousand dollars. So just Coach Jennings has done an awesome job of writing grants. I recommend anybody looking to, uh, know how to write grants. Apparently Coach Jennings knows what to do. So, um, and again, uh, ten thousand dollars, over ten thousand dollars in grant money is big in a high school athletic program. So we, um, they have a lot to be excited about. The Junior ROTC, um, Chester, um, Senior High School sponsored an inaugural archery tournament. All of our schools have really gotten big in archery over the last couple of years. And, um, so although Chester didn't finish in the top three, they just got a lot of valuable insight, not only into competing, but also being able to sponsor this. Lewisville High School did, um, participate and I believe Great Falls High School participated as well. So Lewisville High School, as I said, they did participate. Their Team A came in second place and their Team B came in sixth place. So I'm just really proud of all of our junior ROTC students. There are a lot of students who may not be, um, on the athletic field, but are participating ROTC. And they just, this, uh, archery program has got grown from just a few to a great deal of our students and something that, um, I can tell you firsthand, they really, really enjoy. So, um, I realized I attended all three homecoming events and I also realized that every game I attended, I, the team won. So I don't know if I was a lucky, um, charm, but anyway, um, I got to watch three different, uh, homecomings. So I just wanted to do a shout out to Tamari Caldwell, who is the Chester High School King, and Jada McCree, who is our, um, queen at Chester High School. And then at Lewisville High School, Jordan Strong was named the king and Trista Kennedy was named the queen. Um, as I sit here, I realize I taught Trista Kennedy's dad. And now she is a senior at Lewisville High School. Um, at Great Falls High School, Mr. Jaden House was named king. And then our queen was Miss Ak- Akiriana, I want to make sure I said it right, Worthy. And so beautiful, um, dresses and outfit choices. And of course, all of our kings, um, in their football attire on Friday nights, but it was nice to get to watch all that. And if you notice, they really have some big, beautiful crowns now for homecomings, so. Um, but beautiful, beautiful. We have lots to be proud of in how, um, wonderful our children are representing our schools. Um, so like I said, I did go to a lot of Friday night games since I have, in the last month. Um, I'm of course accustomed to doing that, but I got to watch Great Falls win, Chester, uh, win and Lewisville win as well. So it was fun to get to see that. Lewisville, for their homecoming, unfortunately, the team that, um, they were to compete against forfeited. Um, I guess they knew I was there. I don't know. And anyway, but, um, they had an alumni game and the beauty of that, I think the alumni won that game. And so, um, our old lions came back strong. And so there we go. The other opportunity, um, that I've had is I've got in one day, uh, to do three different, um, either interview, well, I guess all three of them were interviews. I was on the radio early in the morning and then came back, was interviewed by our own Chester reporter and then was, um, on the radio with Earl Moore. So, uh, you didn't, you didn't get our photo. We'll have to do it next time. But anyway, so I had a wonderful day doing that. It's been a lot of fun just getting to, uh, do something a little different than what I was accustomed to as a principal. I also, it is one of my favorite things to get to read to students. And so Lewisville Elementary allowed me to read to two groups. And I am planning this week, I'll be going to Chester Park to read to the entire second grade at Chester Park. And I'm excited about doing that. So Great Falls Elementary School, of course, where I taught last year, uh, I've got to get my plan in place to get there with my fifth graders or at least, um, some group there. I also got to attend, this was already planned, but we got to attend the Listen Tour in Great Falls. And of course, we have Listen Tours planned, um, in the coming months to go to Chester and also Lewisville. What a wonderful opportunity to get to hear from staff members, community members, parents, whoever wants to come in. Um, all of the senior staff, is they are available to answer questions or just to get to know us a little bit better? So a cool opportunity. Anybody that has not got to participate would like to come, uh, we, again, we will have those and we'll announce them, of course, on our social media. And lastly, uh, we had a pinkout day to recognize, um, breast cancer awareness. And so throughout the district, we were all dressed in our pink. And that is everything I have in my superintendent report tonight.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Snipes. All right, moving on. So I believe we concluded executive session. I do want to open it up to the board. Are there any board members that feel like we need to return to a second executive session? No? Okay. All right, next we move into our action items. Um, we're going to cross off A. B is the second reading of policy BEA live streaming of board meetings. Do I have a motion to approve the second reading of policy BEA live streaming of board meetings?
Madam Chairman, I move that we approve the live streaming of board meeting policy.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor of approving the second reading of policy BEA live streaming of board meetings, please signify by saying aye. Any opposed? That motion carries unanimously. All right, next is the second reading of policy G C L E Unencumbered Time Amendment. Administrative rule G C L E dash R, Unencumbered Time Amendment. Do I have a motion to approve the second reading of policy G C L E?
I make a motion to approve the second reading of policy G C L E Unencumbered Time Amendment. Administrative rule G C L E dash R, Unencumbered Time Amendment.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? All those in favor of approving the second reading of policy G C L E Unencumbered Time Amendment. Administrative rule G C L E dash R, Unencumbered Time Amendment. Please signify by saying aye. Any opposed? That motion carries unanimously. All right, next is our election of delegates for the South Carolina School Board Association, two thousand twenty-five Delegate Assembly. So, um, as the precedent was said in the past, um, I am going to accept the first delegate position as the board chair. We do have two votes, which means we can have two delegates and we should also have, um, at least one alternate. So is there a nomination for, and you can self-nominate for this. Is there a nomination for, um, our second delegate for the South Carolina School Board Association Delegate Assembly?
I'll nominate, uh, Brenda Ford.
She's not going.
It's just not, she's not going?
No, I am going. To, to the, the vetting. Well, I want to meet the new superintendent of education and see what she has to say.
Um, I have to.
Well, I do the best you can.
Oh, wow. Okay.
I just, I just, um, Ms. Fund, Ms. Thomas and Ms., um, McKee and Ms., uh, Houston Whitey.
Okay, so all those in favor of nominating Ms. Brenda Ford as the second delegate for the South Carolina School Board Association, two thousand twenty-five Delegate Assembly, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries unanimously. All right, now we have one alternate position. I make a motion, I recommend Ms. Tara Thomas as the alternate. Do you accept the nomination?
Sure.
Any other nominations? All those in favor of approving Ms., approving Ms. Tara Thomas as the, um, alternate for the South Carolina School Board Association, two thousand twenty-five Delegate Assembly, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, that motion carries unanimously. All right, next up we have the approval of the two thousand twenty-five loyalty bonuses.
Madam Chairman, I make a motion that we approve the two thousand twenty-five, twenty-six loyalty bonuses.
Second. Okay, any discussion? All right, all those in favor of approving the two thousand twenty-five, two thousand twenty-six loyalty bonuses in the amount of one thousand dollars for full-time employees and five hundred dollars for part-time employees, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries unanimously. All right, next the budget amendment for two thousand twenty-five as presented by CFO Terry Smith. Do I have a motion?
Madam Chair. Madam Chair, I move that we approve the budget amendment, two thousand twenty-five, twenty-six as presented.
Okay, second?
Second.
Any discussion? All right, all those in favor of approving the budget amendment for two thousand twenty-five, twenty-six as presented by Ms. Smith, please signify by saying aye. Any opposed? That motion carries unanimously. Do I have a motion for adjournment?
Madam Chair, but I make a motion that we adjourn.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
All right, all those in favor of adjournment, please signify by saying aye. Any opposed? That motion carries. We are adjourned.